Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 4th City Council Meeting. I'm calling it to order. Councilmember Hunt is joining us virtually today. Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Ray has an excused absence this evening. As a reminder, we still continue to have our remote aspect to our meetings, and so both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
On our original agenda, we had a special business item, ID 1674, recognition of Freddie Rabadan from Target. However, he is not unable to make it to tonight's meeting, and so we're going to push this item out a few weeks and have Freddie join us at a later time. The next item on our agenda this evening is public comment, and this is when members of the public can address the council in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance will be asked to make comments, called on first, and if you are joining us virtually and you would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send our host a chat message. If you're on your phone, use star three, and if you're joined by a computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. If you're in the room and you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before I close this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thanks. I'll read a few guidelines before we get to public comment. You're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Please direct your comments to the whole of council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will follow up with you if needed. When you have been recognized, unmute your microphone if you are attending virtually, or step up to the lectern that's in the center of the hall if you're here with us in the room. Please state your name and address and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin us if you can. Personal attacks, obscene language, and derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously. We thank everyone who is taking the time out tonight to address us. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Paul Quinn.
Welcome, Paul. I'm going to get you to push the button in the bottom of the -- there you go. Red light, you're on.
Is that red? Okay, good. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Paul Quinn, and I live in Sumamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual that cares about recycling and composting and reducing what we send to the landfill. Thanks to Tammy, by the way, in your city clerk's office for her responsiveness and my many requests. Let's start with a reminder from a King County survey of trash sent to the landfill, which showed that two-thirds of what is sent to the landfill can be either recycled or composted. So two-thirds of our trash is actually not trash. The first handout that Tisha emailed you, this one, now reflects from difference from before, the full year 2023 diversion numbers for Issaquah. As you can see in Table 3, our diversion rate is essentially flat versus 2022. City of Issaquah has had a climate action plan in place since 2021, and this plan shows the city cares about recycling and composting, and yet did not make progress in the diversion rate in 2023 versus 2022. In fact, Issaquah's Climate Action Plan dashboard shows the city's diversion rate has only gotten worse since 2017. We have good plans to do better. We've done worse. Why? One reason, I think, is we need actions that are citywide. For example, tonight's consent calendar and the presentation from Macology show niche efforts which are not bad, but they're insufficient. We need actions that cover all single-family residents, all businesses, all multifamily locations. In this meeting, I'm going to walk through some of the recommendations noted in the second of the three handouts in your email. This one. The city should initiate a program to provide a kit to each household and business which would contain a free indoor recycling container and a free countertop kitchen scraps container. The kit sends a strong message that this city council feels so strongly about recycling and composting, it is providing a free kit to all residents. This is a citywide effort with impact. The city has made efforts to invite folks to have recycling and composting containers at their sites. As our declining rates of diversion clearly show, asking folks has been insufficient to drive change. Therefore, I suggest the city pass ordinance to require all 1,582 remaining single-family homes utilize a food scrap yard waste barrel. All businesses serving the public to make available a recycle container. All businesses serving food to the public to make available food scraps container. Pass the city ordinance to require all 143 remaining multifamily locations make available food scrap yard waste container. The people that want to use food scrap containers can be available to them. Let's make recycling and composting simpler when a resident is working within Issaquah business by requiring each business to work with the disposal company to assure all public-facing disposal containers match the colors we all know that are as residents. These matters have urgency, as each month Issaquah sends to the landfill another 1,000 tons. People in the city of Issaquah want to live sustainably. They need the tools and the leadership of the council to help them increase the rate of recycling and composting. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And we have some new attendees tonight. Part of our rules for audience comments is we try to not encourage clapping or booing or anything that might discourage another speaker from coming up. But we're so glad you're here. Like, we're so excited, so I hope that didn't sound too awful. Who's next on our list? City Clerk?
Next, we have Zoe Deering, Sienna Gould, Matthew Fisher, and Andrew Kim.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you all today. My name is Sienna Gould, and I am a junior at Gibsonak High School. With me tonight is Zoe Deering, also a student at Gibsonak, plus representatives from Issaquah High School, Matthew Fisher, and Andrew Kim. Together, we make up the Issaquah Sustainability Ambassadors Team, a youth-led nonprofit organization with a vision to rapidly advance a sustainable future. Tonight, we would like to speak on our current work and future plans to help the Issaquah School District implement a district-wide sustainability policy similar to what Bellevue School District did almost a year ago.
I would like to thank you all for your support and time taken to create and implement the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. This is such an important step in creating a more sustainable and environmentally stable world for us all today and many years to come. The Issaquah School District spans over a number of cities, including Issaquah, Newcastle, and parts of Renton and Sumamish. With over 19,000 students, the Issaquah School District has a very large impact on not only our youth's education, but also community environmental impacts. Because of this, we would like to ask for your support in our initiative to help the school board create a sustainability policy which reflects on these goals stated in the Issaquah Climate Action Plan.
As a student in the Issaquah School District, I've seen firsthand the impact that sustainability initiatives have had, leading a water bottle refill station installation at Issaquah High School, as well as the distribution of 500-plus refillable water bottles in partnership with Cascade Water Lines, as well as a composting program that we launched just last week, helping sorting in the cafeteria, just like that. And I know that these models can be expanded district-wide, and that is why we're trying to have a sustainability policy that helps the school district work collaboratively with the city to advance our city climate action plan.
So in conclusion, we ask that the council board construct a letter of recommendation to the Issaquah School District to collaboratively work towards meeting Issaquah's Climate Action Plan. By creating a linkage between the Issaquah School District and the city through a sustainable policy, not only would campaigns be more efficient, but they'll be much more effective and help give a higher chance in achieving sustainable goals set in the Climate Action Plan. I applaud Issaquah as being the first and only legal certified city in the state of Washington, and I believe we should not stop there and instead continue to try and make the world a better place. Your help would be much appreciated, and we all thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Very inspiring. City Clerk, is there anyone else that has signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Victor Bello.
Welcome, Victor.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor. I come to you because I'm passionate about our city and making the dream of living in Issaquah attainable, right? I got involved in the local government in this because I fell in love with the city, and the most impact you can have is at the local level, right? So I started seeing what you guys were doing, and again, I got really involved, and I was reading today's note, and then, how can you not be passionate when you have this example by young people coming here and driving their things, right? And as I was reading today's agenda, I found the Tibbetts Crossing Development Agreement, and I was reading through it, and then I saw that it sets the 80% AMI as the affordable threshold, which I was speaking to somebody from the administration and explained to me that these were deals that were set up much in advance before we're just basically putting it in the agreement itself. But, I mean, 80% AMI sets the entry point for affordable housing at $117,000 a year. A family of four with two working parents making not even minimum, like, more than minimum wage wouldn't get even halfway through to that amount just trying to get 30% of their income to pay just for services and rent. So what are we calling affordable? Like, what are we making? What statement are we making when we say that we believe that only people that make this amount should be able to live in Issaquah when we're calling this project affordable housing? I don't think it speaks to what we really want to build, an inclusive and inviting community to provide, you know, a lower entry point to really wonderful people that deserve to also live in the, you know, little paradise that we built here and we love, right? And then, to a second point, in the same affordable housing comes like the current state of so many developments and the ADUs around the city where there's a lot of, you know, short-term rentals available, and there's a lot of sometimes rental houses available that upon inspection belong to either corporations or to people that don't live in the city and are not invested, as we are, into making this a great community. Could we maybe introduce legislation, as it's been done in many parts of the country, to limit the amount of people that are looking at us and the great city that we're building as an investment opportunity to make a quick buck and not, like, making people invest themselves and their lives into this community? What drove me here was I was a renter for years before I found the little house I have here that I'm fixing up myself in Old Town, and I fell in love with the city, and I invested on it, and thankfully, I was able to, but it's difficult. So if we curb some of these issues, maybe we can start lowering the entry point for others and build a more inclusive and diverse community as we really want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victor. City Clerk, has anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
Mayor, no one else has signed up, and just checking here, but it looks like at this time, we don't have any members of the public online with us.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who took the time tonight to come in and talk to the council. We heard about solid waste diversion and how Issaquah could reduce its material that it's sending to the landfill. We heard from some students about requesting council support for the sustainability plans that they are trying to work into their schools, which I think is great. We also heard about Issaquah's affordable housing and the desire for affordable housing for all, including thinking about the entry point level for that, and also about corporate owners of local housing stock and how that could impact. So thank you all very much for sharing that. We appreciate that you took the time to join us tonight. And as a reminder, you can always send comments in to the city council at any time at the citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov email. The next item of business on the agenda this evening is going to be the city clerk speaking to us. City Clerk.
Mayor, I had a correction to make to the consent calendar, which is the next item of business. A correction was provided by Councilmember Hall today regarding Agenda Item B, the special meeting minutes of October 23rd. He was not in attendance at that special meeting, and so if the consent calendar is approved tonight, it will include the correction to omit him from the list of attendees.
Thank you for that. Okay, now we will move on to the consent calendar, and as Mayor, I do not have any remarks on tonight's consent calendar, and I'm going to look and see if any of the committee chairs or chair designees would like to report on any of the consent calendar items. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council Services Safety and Parks Committee met in regards to what was at the time called ID 1662, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Grant Recommendations. We agreed with staff recommendations for the grant funding breakdown and asked it to be brought back to the full council on the consent agenda, which it is here tonight as AB 8766. But it was a thoughtful process that the committee appreciated the methodology that was used.
Thank you. Any other committee chairs that want to provide any comments on any consent calendar items? Not seeing any indication. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as adjusted? Okay.
Oh, thank you very much. I did forget to read the part that says the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, you will be approving all of these items with just a single vote. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you. And does any council member, I don't believe I asked you this, does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar? Not seeing it. And it has been moved and seconded to approve it. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That carries unanimously 6-0. The next item of business this evening is going to be under regular business, and it's AB 8787, the Multifamily Housing Tax Exemption Ordinance, and the request before council this evening is to adopt the ordinance. The item was before the city council for a staff presentation and public hearing at the February 5, 2024 city council meeting, and I'd like to have Community Planning and Development Director Minnie Dollywall to briefly introduce this item. Welcome, Minnie.
Good evening, members of the council, any community members online and in the room, and Mayor Polly. So like you said, it was, this item was in front of council as a public hearing on February 5, and I had a presentation which is included in your packet. So tonight, it's come back to council for discussion and then possible action, if that's what council wants to do. We are here to answer any questions council might have. Also, online, virtually, we have Michael from Arch. He's online as well, who helped us with some of the financial analysis. That's all. I really don't have any formal presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Minnie. And thank you, Michael, for coming. That's super helpful. Does council have any questions? Sorry, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. When we last heard about this item, it was mentioned that there would be a conversation with the school district leadership about the implications that this potential action would have on them, and I wondered if that could be summarized, that discussion, and also how we will follow up with them following our decision tonight.
Council President would like to provide some comments.
Thank you. And I know you were at the meeting as well, so if you'd like to add in?
Yeah, I was not at the meeting, but I think Wally was, so.
Yes, so I can go ahead and summarize that then for the council. So council leadership met with the Issaquah School Board Leadership and Superintendent and presented the information on the MFTs and showed the impact it would have, you know, all of this is estimates. At that point, they didn't have, their staff didn't have time to review it and thus bring it back with, you know, kind of findings of how that would really impact their overall budget. What they did say is they were pleased to know that they would still have the impact fees, and then they also talked about the fact that their budget situation and revenue generation is very much different from ours, and much of their budget comes from student headcount, and a lot of that is subsidized by the state. So they had questions about how the affordable housing in any MFT program, because we were really talking about the fact that there may be more of these, how that would impact student generation rates, and we also didn't have an answer for that. So I think it's a continued conversation. We welcomed them to have further input on it, particularly as we talk about a larger potential MFT program, but they didn't have any real way to have a full conversation on it. So I would say it was presented, start of a conversation was had.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions?
Sorry, can I get on the second part of the question? How are we planning on following up with the school district?
Thank you.
I don't know if it was clarified on any particular date or time. We presented the information to them and welcomed them to provide a response as they were able to do so, because it was obviously going to require some staff. So I will make sure that we follow up. We have quarterly meetings with them, and I think once we understand what the MFT timeline is, we'll be better able to figure out, you know, we can't demand that they provide a response within a certain period of time. It was really pushed onto them to say, if you have a response, please bring it back as we figure things out.
Councilmember Hunt, if I could just clarify something, is this, just based on your line of questioning, is this something that you feel like you need to know before you would be able to move the item forward? Is that, is it a concern?
I want, I was asking the questions because it does have an impact on them, and so I wanted to know what our plan was for making sure that we're good partners.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Andrea? Sorry, the P.C. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Just want to remind council that there's a joint meeting with Issaquah School Board on, in April.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Director Dollywall, thank you very much for replying to my questions earlier today over email. And I didn't ask this one, so I guess to the best of your knowledge, are you aware, is it common for MFTE programs to be structured where if there are affordability requirements, they exist only over the term of the MFTE, or, because the only other experience that I have with MFTEs is our Pioneer Project, right? And that's lifetime affordability. So I'm just curious what you think about MFTs across the region, the affordability requirement?
Yeah, yeah, you know, Michael can speak to that, because I think he does MFTE contracts with all the cities, so I'll punt it to Michael.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. We know of cities even within the Arch membership that do MFT both ways. That is, well, primarily Bellevue has a limit of affordability that corresponds to the 12-year tax exemption. Our other cities have affordability for the life of the project, that is, as long as the property is in residential use. So it's done both ways.
Yeah, I can add a little bit. In terms of the state law, there's an eight-year MFT provision which doesn't have any affordability component to it. So a lot of cities that are trying to achieve their policy objectives of kickstarting a project somewhere or whatever their objective might be, they go down the path of eight-year multifamily tax exemption. That doesn't come under the state law with the affordability component with it. Now, of course, with the current status, you know, things have changed in terms of the policy objectives for affordable housing for the cities, but in the past, people used to use the eight-year MFT just without the affordability component to meet other policy objectives than affordable housing.
Any other questions? No. Oh, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This would be a change to our code, so I wondered if Director Dollywall, if you could speak to how we enforce this over the lifetime of the, the lifetime of these regulations, or over the duration of these regulations, rather.
Yeah, so there are certain specific provisions for this development agreement, you know, that they could choose and move the units around, but there's an annual reporting requirement which comes under the state. So they would still be providing an annual report of how many are affordable, but this is a little bit, you know, unique circumstance with this particular development where the covenant is not for this specific unit, that they could move the units around based on the development agreement terms, but there is an annual reporting requirement which they would be subject to. I don't know, Michael, do you want to add anything more to that question?
The contract will specify how the monitoring and compliance is done. I expect the way that we do it with other cities where we administer MFT programs, so we will make sure that they are complying with the affordability requirements that
Thank you. Any other questions? I think you can.
Okay. Let me get that right piece up. Okay, I move to adopt ordinance number 3049, amending Sections 3.09, 0.030, 0.050, 0.060, 1.10, and 1.120 of the Issaquah Municipal Code regarding the city's multifamily housing property tax exemption program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a council discussion? Council President, followed by Councilmember Joe, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, and I see a council member. I'm supporting this tonight, not only because this moves forward a project that has gone through many legal scenarios, and I feel like this is an important recognition of this project in particular as being different from other projects. I look forward to a further conversation on the benefits and drawbacks of a full MFT program that we will discuss at a later point, but I think I very much appreciate the staff doing the calculations on what the potential, not cost, but offset non-collected revenue would be for us. That, for me, makes me recognize this is super cheap. We couldn't buy this type of housing at that cost. I recognize that there are costs to I recognize that there are costs to other taxing districts and other localities and things like that. That's a larger conversation, but I think in the aspect of this, the cost per unit is such that I do not have a problem approving this. I look forward to seeing it developed and seeing the benefits for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I'll build on the comments from Council President Walsh. The MFT tax implications to property owners certainly is something that we're all cognizant of and want to take a look at. I looked up a Washington State Department of Commerce report on this. It was put together in 2021 by the Growth Management Housing Team on the multifamily tax exemption, and the city of Snohomish used this report to kind of do a calculation as to how large the impact would be on each individual property owner, and so the figures aren't exactly fit to Issaquah, but I'll read them, and we can kind of take a look at what the level of the impact is, or the magnitude of the impact is, and as we make our decision. Council President Walsh is very correct in saying that this is a fairly inexpensive option for our city. So what they found is they gave, in 2021, total exemptions ranging from $13,000 to $2.6 million per city, with the average exemption being $823,000. Snohomish County Assessor's Office took a look at all the property values, and the city staff for Snohomish calculated that for every $1 million of exemption approved, the average valued home in Snohomish of $468,700 would see an estimated increase of 50 cents per year on the property tax bill. So our house values certainly are higher, perhaps they're double that amount, so that for every 1 million of exemptions approved at a value of 920, 930, I hate doing math in public, sorry about that, $935,000, would see an estimated increase of perhaps $1 per year on the property tax bill. That is just to say that this is a type of tax that, you know, we complain about traffic, and then when we try to put in roads, all of our city people have to pay that tax, but the people that use the roads back and forth are not paying that tax, right? In this case, the whole entire city, all the property owners together, are taking a piece of that tax and paying a piece of that tax, because we believe, as a council and a city, that having housing at all different income levels and economic levels is important, as was stated in comments during public comment. And so this is one tool that can be used in this one specific development to help us with the affordable housing challenge that we have, and I would be voting in favor of it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. You know, I really thought I was going to too, and I'm actually not quite sure where I land on this, but I'm struggling with it, because I actually think it seems kind of expensive. And I guess the question is, for us to consider, is whether 24 years, 12 plus the addition of another 12, so 24 years of that MFT, of that lost revenue to the city, and of the shifting property tax burden across residents, is worth just 24 years of some 80% AMI housing? I think it's roughly 200, depending on how they would do it. And I don't know necessarily if I could go to a property tax payer resident and say that the increase in property taxes that you'll be paying, or the lost revenue, essentially the cost that the city is bearing, and that the other jurisdictions are bearing, is worth that 24-year period of 80% AMI. No, I'm struggling with that one, and I'm curious if anyone else has kind of thought through it that way. You know, MFT is also interesting too, because we are the ultimate decision maker for all of these different jurisdictions, right? They don't necessarily have a voice in this process, which is a very interesting policy conundrum, but, so we also need to be able to say to all the jurisdictions, not the school district, right, not just the school district, right, that, that we think the lost revenue from this, and your residents whose property taxes will be shifted a little bit because of this, will all benefit from 200-ish units of 80% AMI housing, and I'm not necessarily convinced on that. It's also difficult too, because we can't necessarily ask for more information. This is like the best we were able to negotiate, and I'll acknowledge that, like, this is way better than not having anything across the city, but I don't know if it's necessarily worth it to go down this, as opposed to the market rate housing that will essentially exist in 24 years anyways, when these resources could be dedicated in other ways to promote affordable housing or affordable living. So I guess my mind isn't made up yet, so I'd like to hear some more as well.
If it's okay, Councilmember Minnie, there was some information shared by Councilmember Joe about, you know, impacts on property taxes, and then there are tables within the council's material that talks about shifting tax burdens. Do we have specific numbers similar to what Councilmember Joe mentioned for Snohomish County? Is it really a dollar?
You know, I'm not familiar with the report that Councilmember Joe was discussing. It does get spread out to all the taxpayers with that levy code, so how much it is per person, we didn't do that calculation, but the concept behind this forgone revenue and the shifting is that the city can still do their 1% levy, you know, the property tax increase, but, so if the project is half-built in that year, and the assessor taxes it, so that $400,000 or whatever, you know, for an example, if half a million in property taxes is received by the city for that year, your 1% will start from that, so you won't have to go and, you know, so that, so that it's not a cumulative decrease over a number of period of years. So there's, there's that, but how much of it gets spread out to a per taxpayer? We didn't do that math.
Okay, just curious. So I've got Councilmember Hunt, and then I think it was DeMichele, and then Council President, and then Mayor. Okay.
Well, firstly, I appreciate the thoughtful remarks of my colleagues on the council. I, I think this is a complicated policy tool that we're considering using. We have been presented with other information about how other cities have used this tool, and so one of the things that I was thinking about when I was reviewing the materials is the, the earlier reports that we've seen about the amount of usage of this tool in our neighboring cities, and the amount of affordable housing that it has generated. Lack of affordable housing is one of the major challenges facing our community, and there is a real need for this housing, for workforce housing, for housing across the income levels. There are, I believe, huge societal benefits and public benefits of moving the needle in this direction that we're contemplating this evening. I do wish this was affordable for the lifetime of the building, as, as it may be for other times when we, as a city, use this tool. I would very much hope that this is, that it's possible in other instances. In this case, I don't believe it is, and I also believe that this rate is typical in our, or this time period is typical. In our materials, it had the RCW described as the value of eligible housing improvements is exempted for property taxes typically for eight to 12 years. So I, it seems that this is typical for this usage of the tool for the time period. That said, it would be excellent, of course, in future consideration of using MFT if we can have affordability for the lifetime of the building. I am also sympathetic to the, the comments that were made earlier by the community member regarding that $117,000 per year as the 80% area median income for a family of four. That seems high for a lot of families, but at the same time, we know that many families at that, or even around there, even maybe higher, are cost burdens and are, are facing hardship because there are cost burdens to live in this community. So between that, and between all of the community members that I've spoken to that are very concerned about if their, if their children are going to be able to return to the community and find housing that is affordable after they come back from college, for instance, or seniors looking to downsize, or, or seniors looking to join their families in this community to help raise grandchildren. I've heard lots of community stories about all of these challenges, finding housing that meets those needs. So I do, I do very much believe there is a big need. I think this moves us in the right direction. I want very much to work with our partner organizations, the school district I mentioned earlier, but to Councilmember Hall's point, there are many other organizations that are also impacted when we consider using MFT, so want to make sure that we continue to be communicative with them about what we're, what we're contemplating, what we're doing, and how that will impact them by our estimations. And then, so, so lastly, I do, I do appreciate the thoughtful comments from council. I spent a lot of time looking through the materials on this this evening. I think it moves the needle in the right direction. It's definitely not sufficient. We definitely will continue to have challenges addressing our community's need for housing, but I think, in this moment, in this particular instance, this is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Councilmember Hunt said a lot of the things that I wanted to say, but I did want to point out, first of all, I also appreciated the remarks from Mr. Bello, and, and I think that as a city, we need to employ various strategies to find housing for that 30% and 60% AMI. But I did want to point out that the 80% AMI is really aimed at workforce housing, and so our fellow organizations, such as the school district, have struggled with recruiting teachers. The hospital, Swedish Hospital, struggles with recruiting technicians and others who are making, making incomes in that, in that area. Eastside Fire and Rescue struggles to get firefighters who don't have to make long commutes into our area, and so forth. So, so this 80% AMI in this particular development does meet the need, and we have many, many needs for affordable housing on many different income levels, but this particular one is aimed at workforce housing, and even though those other organizations are giving up tax and revenue, just as we are, the benefit to our community is opening up a fair amount, certainly a welcome amount, of affordable housing that at least the workforce level will be able to, be able to access. And so I just wanted to make that additional point. There is a benefit in this project other than the, the tax revenue that we're, we're giving up, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really excited to be supporting this this evening. 200 units is a lot. We've had much smaller numbers in the past that were also time restricted, that we did, because workforce housing is workforce housing. Adding workforce housing is something that's been important to me since the day that I got on council, and so a couple hundred units, that's a lot. That's, that's like a sizable fraction of a transit-oriented development site. So, you know, this housing is going to go in, and the ability to make some of it workforce, I think Councilmember DeMichele's, Deputy Council President DeMichele's point about, you know, this can benefit the school district and benefit other, you know, benefit the hospital and the other healthcare providers around here by providing, by providing housing for a workforce that might otherwise have to travel longer distances, which is the environmentally responsible thing to do. So for all these reasons, I'm excited to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to come back to Council President?
Thanks. I want to take this opportunity to do math in public, because I'm just calling you out over there. So I know the number of 32. almost 1 million over a 24-year period, which is the forgone tax revenue for all of the different jurisdictions. That, that seems like a lot of money, but I want to take it back to this kind of per year basis. So all of the jurisdictions would forego $1.337 million. If we divide that by the 200 units, that's $6,686. Would you be willing, even as a city, to pay $6,686 for a family to be able to live in a stable housing unit that has something where they're not cost burdened? I would say that's pretty darn cheap, and that's not the forgone revenue for our jurisdiction. So we're at $118,391. If you divide that by the 200 units, that's less than $600 per unit. So it's those types of numbers that make me recognize, gosh, we spend way more than that in supporting families, well, technically nonprofits, who support families who are struggling with their housing and are about to be evicted, and this is, in many ways, just another way to prevent some of those evictions and keep the kids in the Issaquah School District, so they don't have to be evicted mid-year and move, and we know all of those benefits. But just looking at the math, this, on a per-unit basis, is pretty darn cheap, and not something we could build ourselves in, say, a TOD project, for example. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Hall?
I appreciate all the comments. I think this helps me a little bit. I'm still concerned, I think I might, I think I might be at a place though where I'm willing to support it, but I have some concerns, maybe that I'll just share as we move forward, especially as we're developing the next MFT program for Pioneer Project, and if we consider using the tool elsewhere, but I think, for the first part, don't get me wrong, 80% AMI is still, there's still a need for that in this community, so, so don't get me wrong there. But the, I mean, the concern is just the benefit for the community is only 24 years. So, and I think breaking it down by person or by unit might be missing the point, because it's about the total sum. Budgeting is always about total sums over a long period of time, and committing it to particular priorities, right? So it's about this total sum of $32 million, and we are the decision-maker for all these jurisdictions, so I'm just kind of thinking of it as, that's all of our lost revenue that, that we could have committed to priorities, that are our organization's priorities. That, for 24 years of affordable housing, and a little bit, and this is my fault too. I wish I would have asked questions about this a little bit earlier and kind of gotten a little deeper, and I recognize too, again, there's really nothing we can do to adjust this. So I think it'll be important, as we move forward, to continue to understand the value of kind of these term-limited MFT programs, and if that's something that we want to continue to do, even if other cities are doing, or if, if kind of lifetime affordability requirements is a requirement, a policy requirement that we want to set when we start looking forward to our citywide policies and all that. I think I'm comfortable supporting this, but I, I just, it's a lot of money for only 24 years of affordable housing, and I struggle with it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to have a second round of comments? Let's go, Councilmember Hunt, and then Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One additional comment that is something that I appreciate in the way this is developed for this use case, is that the units are distributed in buildings, so they're integrated into buildings with market rate units, which I think is, is really important, and they're also required to be aesthetically similar, so there's specific wording about that. So we are having housing in this case that is in many, is integrated in with market rate housing, which I think is, is important, and is something that I will also continue to look for as we consider other ways to get affordable housing in the future as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you. So, I mean, I think there's another way to look at this 24-year, which is, it does not bind the residents of the city- is it does not bind the residents of the city beyond 24 years to this policy, right? If, if we were doing this in perpetuity, you could see an argument that somebody says, well, what if, what if the housing market looks different in 25 years? And what if, you know, the subsidy is no longer needed? And, and so, you know, there's an argument that says it's a positive and that, so I just want to, I just want to point that out around the issue of the, the timing and whether 24 years is good or not. It's really, you know, we're, we're not committing our residents beyond 24 years to supporting this program.
And Councilmember Joe, I think you had your supposal.
Thank you. To add to the conversation, I'll just look at the report that came from Arch and their conclusions that might help the conversation a little bit. They point out that the, the taxes are spread out across or shifted to other taxpayers. Well, jurisdictions do not lose revenue from MFTE programs in the sense of actual reduction from previous years through this process as well. So, you know, it's, we always try to plan and have a way to, you know, make these programs possible. And this is one way that I think that we can achieve that. Just to comment on Council Deputy President, Councilmember Barb De Michele, let's, let's take a look at who the affordable housing is for. And here I'm quoting from some figures that were done in Everett for a planning commission meeting in August of 2023. And a preschool teacher, on average, here in the state of Washington, earns $45,920. And using the calculation that they were using there, they, they can afford a payment of $962 for rent. Is that a rent that is in Issaquah that exists right now? Is that a rent that needs to have a little bit of help from affordable housing? Childcare worker, $41,030 a year, can afford $968 a month. School bus driver, $63,790, can afford $1,482 a month. Commercial airline pilot, my last one, $127,910, can afford $1,752 per month. So we're talking about people that we want to have in our community that have good jobs, that add to the, the moral fiber and the, the general great things that we do here in the city. All those wages and occupations that I pointed out are people I'd love to see in our community. And I think that having this exemption is one tool that we can use to have more housing at all income levels. And I'm, again, supportive of this one tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. And I think we have kind of worked around the room twice. Would anybody else like to have a final comment, or are we going to move to the vote? Councilmember Hall, bring us home.
Yeah, just to say, I think, I think I'm, I think I'm comfortable with where we've landed. I, but, and I just want to reiterate, I think there's a need for kind of a more rigorous cost benefit analysis moving forward as we look at other, other projects. So I just wanted to say that going forward. And thank you very much to the council for, for talking this one through with me.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I think there's a couple of things that our director probably pulled out tonight, queries that maybe we could have a little more information about when we start to talk about MFTE at a more citywide basis. So thank you for bringing up those concerns because it gives us some homework to do. So if there is no further discussion, the motion before the council is to adopt ordinance number 3049, amending sections 3.09.030, 0.050, 0.060, 1.110, and 1.120 of the Issaquah Municipal Code regarding the city's multifamily housing property tax exemption program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? That carries unanimously 6-0. Thank you very much, Director. That was great. The next item that we have on our agenda this evening under regular business is AP 774. This is the 2021 Building and Fire Code Adoption and Amendments to IMC Title 16, Buildings and Construction. And the request before council this evening is to adopt the ordinances. And I'd like to invite Building Official James Gray to present this item. Welcome, James.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, Council President Walsh. So first of all, I want to say I'm, I am excited to be here. I, I, three years ago, I was here before you with building codes, believe it or not. And it seemed like yesterday, I know it's a boring topic to everybody. I did bring some props, so I brought my stack of codebooks over there. And, and the reason I brought that is that the documents that are before you are the amendment documents which amend the, the nationally adopted codebooks that are amended by the state and then further amended by the, the, the local jurisdiction here throughout, through quite a process. But all of that is on top of the books that we operate off on a, on a regular basis. Building codes to me are fascinating, partly because they're, they're really all around us. It's like nature. It's the roof that's above you, the walls that are insulated behind you. It's energy, it's structural, it's mechanical, plumbing, it's every bit of the infrastructure that, that we live in. This year, I realized that I have been doing this business for 30 years. In 1994, I got employed with the municipality of Anchorage in my first job as an Assistant Plans Examiner. So I'm excited to be doing this in my 30th year here with the city of Issaquah. So with that, I will, I will get started. What, what we're here before you tonight is adoption of the 2021 code series. And as you know, every three years, these codes are nationally republished through a vigorous process, which involves architects, engineers, contractors, code officials, fire code officials at a national level who present options and say, gosh, I think that door should be three feet. Instead of three feet, it should be three feet and three inches. And they get their opportunity to go up and have their day and make their reason why. It's a wheelchair better, it, it doesn't, all, all those different reasons. And, and they get debated on vigorously before that document is actually produced and published. So, so then we have extensive work in technical committees that I discussed, but that also happens at the state level. So next, the State Building Code Council goes through that entire process, looks at all of that and says, hey, how does this fit for the state of Washington? How does it fit into our energy, into our energy goals and agenda? How does it fit into our climate in different parts of the state? Earthquakes, wind, all of those things. We use a couple of different professional code consultants to help us in the code adoption process. It's not a one-person deal. It's certainly not something I could do by myself. And the timeline at the bottom of the screen that you see is kind of where we're at. This started in mid-2022, and it's bringing us up to tonight. And it got delayed a little bit because of a lawsuit that was occurring at the state level. So our local code adoption, and again, apologies for folks who heard this three years ago, we, it's, it's broken into two pieces. We have the construction administrative code and we have the construction codes. We also have the fire code tonight, which I'm pinch hitting for the fire marshal who brought that piece forward. The construction administrative code is what gives us the ability to administer the codes, charge permit fees, put stop-work orders on dangerous buildings, issue permits, do inspections. All of the pieces that we do are in the construction administrative code. And then the construction codes itself is where we say, take all of those books that are over there that you see on the table, we'll adopt those with the changes that we're proposing to council tonight. So just, just a brief summary of where we're at. We're not proposing any changes to permit fees. Council approved those last year in the last quarter of the year. The fire code has pretty minimal changes, mostly renumbering and reformatting. Nothing super exciting there. There was a staff report that was produced for PDEC in May of 2023 with a detailed summary of changes being proposed. And that committee recommended approval. That was a slightly different process then because that was before the lawsuit was, was happened. So in the summary of changes, the Washington State Energy Code is consistently getting more efficient. And I think that's something that we all aspire to. The R-values in the walls are higher, which is the amount of insulation that you need. The R-values in the roofs are higher. The envelope requirements are tighter, so buildings are, buildings are much more energy efficient, less airflow in and out, better recycling of air. The City of Bellevue amendments to IBC Chapter 9 is where you're going to see most of the red ink in the document that you've got. Last time we adopted Bellevue's, let me back up for a moment. We, we adopt Bellevue's emergency response amendments because they provide mutual aid for us. So they, if we have, forbid, we have a high-rise fire, we need Bellevue to come and assist us with that. And so we adopt all of their amendments to Chapter 9 in the Building and Fire Code, which is the sprinkler fire alarm stuff, not getting too much in, in the weeds. This time, we are proposing to adopt the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Portions of it, we are required by state to adopt. There's mandatory portions and non-mandatory portions. And we are proposing to adopt the same portions of the Wildland Urban Interface Code that the State Building Code Council has, has, has laid out. E-Gov Alliance, numerous edits, and then some minor revisions to the construction administrative code. So the topic that's been most exciting with the, sort of the lawsuits and the hullabaloo at the state level is the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Now, the Wildland Urban Interface Code, the purpose of this document, for folks that don't know, is to try to mitigate the effects of wildland fires, which are becoming more and more of a threat in our community as we are seeing climate change, is one piece of it. And so there's a, there's a national Wildland Urban Interface Code that is tailored, that is tailored more, that has been tailored more specifically for areas that have been hit by wildland fires, like communities in California, in the deserts, more like Eastern Washington side. And we're seeing it come into Western Washington with, with our changing climate. So we have recommended, our, our staff is recommending the same provisions that the State Building Code Council has adopted. And these have to do with something called structural hardening, which gets to, which gets to, will your structure be affected by a wildland fire blowing embers? Those kind of things that come up underneath decks, get into eve vents, and, and mostly get on the roofs where the, where the roofs are of combustible construction. So this, this code requires a Class A roof, which is a higher standard of, of construction shingle and roof assembly. And it limits the amount of eve vent openings, also requires a non-combustible exterior siding on structures. This is for new structures and for additions to structures and most reroofs as well. And some turnaround requirements for long driveways so that fire rigs can have a, have a turnaround after they're over 300 foot in length. So for options, this always feels a little funny because the, the state adopts these codes and we're required to adopt the codes the state adopts. We have some ability, I say we, you, the council have some ability to, to make some changes to those codes. And, and those primarily have to do with some appendices, but at this point, we have mostly adopted every appendix that we can adopt, with the exception of one that we have our own code for, which has to do with recycling, because we have our own recycling section in, in Title 16. And it's actually more, it's, it's more effective, frankly, than what is in the appendix to the residential code. So you can suggest modifications to specific provisions of the code, as long as they're at least as restrictive as a state's. That's, take some analysis, it's a little bit difficult. And, and it keeps you out of the residential code, and that's also by RCW. And you can choose to not approve the proposal. That's a tough one, because if you do that, then we're just punted back to what the state has adopted. And we don't get our construction administrative code, which means it throws our ability to do permitting and all those things into, into disarray. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the building codes as we have posed it in the ordinance. And I am more than happy to answer questions at any level of gross detail about any bit of this pile that's over here that council would like to, would like to ask. For our timing and next steps, of course, we're here at March 4. If you approve this tonight, March 15 will be the effective date, which is the date the state requires that all jurisdictions in the state adopt them by. And the reason why this is such short notice is because of the lawsuit that happened. And all of the jurisdictions are scrambling, all the building officials and fire officials are screaming like, how do we get this through our legislative process in time? And, and part of how we got there is by being able to get on the agenda tonight. I would like to go to the PDEC on April 2 to talk about the Wildland Code again. And that is, hopefully will give us a little more time to have this process wind through the legislative process at the state level. State will be done with their deliberations by then. And we're hoping that anything that's going to happen has happened at that point. But we think that the proposal that we've got, our municipal attorney has given us advice, that is the closest thing to meeting the mandatory requirements of the state that, that we can meet.
Thank you, James. I'm going to go to committee chair before questions, but thank you for indicating questions. That's great. Councilmember Hunt, Chair of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, would you like to summarize the committee's recommendation on this item?
Yes. Well, so this was something that we saw many months back because of the changes in the lawsuits at the state level. So I think it has changed, but I also think that there's been a good summary of the kinds of changes which were to comply with the law. And so I, I think that there was not too much specific concern about the code as presented then. But I also just wanted to acknowledge that there has been time that has elapsed since we saw it.
Thank you very much. So let's start with Council President, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, James. I would be happy to geek out over this with you. I'm not going to go into many details. But I know one of the things that certain community members were concerned with any changes to building code was that they would keep them, it would ban gas appliances in houses. As I read this, gas is still allowed. There is no requirement to move to electric, but there is energy efficiency requirements to do heat pumps for both water and space heating. Am I reading that correctly? And is there any other requirements on gas conversion to electric?
Council President, excellent question. So we, the, the State Energy Code Council has not recommended banning gas. They did in Seattle. There, I understand there was some legislation at the state level. What happens, though, is you, you, you're right, you get efficiency credits for what you choose. And if you choose a high-efficiency furnace, as an example, you get these efficiency credits. But if it's natural gas, you don't get those credits at all. So you, it's really pushing you to the heat pump. And the heat pump prices have come down so much, efficiencies come up so much better, that I think that you're going to see that less and less. So you're correct that the code does not ban natural gas, but in a new structure, you'd be pretty hard-pressed to put in a natural gas furnace. It just wouldn't make a lot of sense.
Councilmember Hall?
Good clarification to ask. Thank you. It really does feel like yesterday when you came to present at the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. I thought that was a fun meeting. We had, we had a good time with you. But it was stunned to learn that it was May of last year. That was, but anyway, some of the things that had come up in our discussion and questions, one of them was around notifying impacted people in the city of Issaquah. So I'm just curious if you've had an opportunity to think about, we were talking about it might be best, you know, when permits are walking out the door. But what are some of the ways that, you know, you thought about how we communicate these changes with the public in May and now?
Sure. Councilmembers, for the chair, that, it seems to come up continually, how are we communicating the changes? And we have our, we have our website, which we put this information on. Not everybody utilizes that to the greatest extent that they can. At the state level, they're doing that. We have, through the mybuildingpermit.com portal, which is, we have 15 cities that use that portal to get permits. There's a whole set of hand- There's a whole set of handouts and details that have how to build a deck, how to do all of these pieces, and we, the global we, are rebuilding those handouts right now to match the Wildland Code, as an example. The construction on decks is going to change, so we've got a deck handout. Those are the types of things that we're doing for public education. And we have quite a few informational bulletins on our website as well. And I'm always willing to go out and do those sort of dog and pony shows on the codes, and my staff are as well. But we also have, through the website, we have chat with a building official, chat with an engineer, chat with a planner, and folks can schedule time to do that on a one-on-one basis anytime through the week. And that's utilized pretty heavily.
Thank you. Yeah, and then can I ask a follow-up? Okay. The other thing that we talked about in committee two was, so the state, they set the mandatory minimum, right? We have to at least be restrictive as the state, but we also were curious for you to keep an eye out as other jurisdictions are adopting, and I know it's been kind of in morph since the lawsuit, and now everyone's freaking out to adopt it, but where are other jurisdictions going above and beyond? So I'm curious if you've been aware of any kind of discussions about jurisdictions going above and beyond, or if that's something that will now have to morph since people are now.
And I'm just hearing the anecdotal blowback from other building officials and fire officials. A lot of folks are, this Wildland Code has hit them out of left field, because they weren't expecting to have pieces that were mandatory. But it is all, it is all over the map. And unfortunately, some jurisdictions are not completely clear on what it means. For instance, in the Wildland Code, some of these provisions are, they're retroactive. And so I don't think some of the jurisdictions were clear that retroactive means that where these, where this vegetation is on your structures, like it's retroactive, it's supposed to not be there. So that's part of the reason why the State Building Code Council did not recommend adopting those provisions. So to answer your question directly, where is everybody, it's all over the map. I'm hearing, we adopted the whole thing, some of them didn't adopt it at all, some of them are proposing to not adopt it at all. And I think Bellevue might be at council tonight as well on their adoption, so I'm not sure where they're going to land.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. So we have a number of homeowner associations in our city, and some of them do regulate things, like I know some do regulate building roofing materials. And so I'm wondering, especially for any changes that would impact, any mandatory changes that might be in conflict, and I'm also thinking about this in terms of the Urban Wildland Interface Code, how do we communicate and make sure that the homeowners' associations are regulating in compliance or in best practice with these regulations?
Another good question, councilmember, through the chair. We feel like we don't have substantial conflicts right now. If we adopted the entire Wildland Code, we would have a substantial conflict, and that's part of what we want to talk to PDC about in a month. We just weren't prepared to dump that on council tonight. So we think where we're at beats the mandatory requirements, doesn't put us in conflict with certainly with Title 18 after that significant rewrite. So we think we're in a pretty good place.
James, if I may add to that, in terms of outreach to the homeowner association, and once the code is adopted, we can certainly share some information related to roofing materials, so we can work with our communications department. I think they maintain a list of HOA contacts to get the word out.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Are there any other questions? Okay. Can I get a motion? I have it here.
I move to adopt ordinance number 3050, amending Chapter 16.04 of the Issaquah Municipal Code, Construction Codes, to adopt by reference the 2021 edition of the State Building Code, including portions of the 2021 International Wildland Urban Interface Code, and making other related amendments to Chapter 16.04 IMC, and adopt ordinance number 3051, amending Chapter 16.06 of the Issaquah Municipal Code, Fire Code, to adopt by reference the 2021 edition of the State Building and Fire Code, and make other related amendments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Mertz.
Yeah, you know, I see the section on, and we've discussed the pieces of the Wildland Urban Interface Code that we would be adopting today, and discussion, or the comment administration will discuss the optional provisions, and come back to city council for action if needed to adopt. As a former King County Emergency Management Advisory Council member, and former Washington Emergency Management Council member, and Squawk Mountain homeowner, I would very much like us to have that conversation. I understand that retroactive codes could be expensive or impossible, right? If somebody said, build 100-foot fire break around your property, most of my property is critical slope, and it would be a bad idea to cut down all the trees. But I do think that it would, I think we owe it to ourselves to at least look at those and see if there are some in there that we want to adopt. You know, Issaquah has been very lucky in the, you know, my house has been there for 50 years, but it's adjacent to open space, and I think, you know, I would hope that we will consider looking at those codes at a subsequent conference today, and see if there are any that would be appropriate for Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I appreciate the future opportunity to look at the Wildland Urban Interface Code as well in the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. I think that we currently have, we have many communities in the city that are at that Wildland Urban Interface, and so it's especially important that we get it right for the lives and safety of our community, and so I look forward to that conversation. I do think that the piece about communicating with our homeowners' associations, especially if we're making things mandatory that are in conflict, which they may be, as we look at what we can do on the Wildland Urban Interface Code, I think we need to make sure that we're in communication with those homeowners' associations, so they know what's coming. But I think it's really important for us because of where we're located, and I think there are beautiful forests, and I look forward to that. I also, you know, as Councilmember Hall mentioned, when PDE did look at this last time, we were thinking about where we should go above and beyond, or what opportunities there would be. And so I think this urban wildland interface, because of our geography, that's probably one where we should consider that as Councilmember Mertz wants to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Council president?
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to recognize that this checks another box on the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. So Policy BE 1.3 asks us to strengthen energy-efficient building codes, and when we look at, you know, how in the implementation section, it lists things as low, medium, and high affordability, and low, medium, and high impact. This is highest affordability, highest impact. And so, yes, I would love to look at what future things that we can do to strengthen that even further, but this is a big step forward, and it's something that I know our community has been calling for and looking for ways, and wanting to say, hey, what can we do to strengthen Title 16? Well, this is a first of hopefully many steps, so thank you.
Thank you, council president. Any more comments? Not seeing any. I'll call for the vote. The motion before council is to adopt ordinance number 3050, amending Chapter 16.04 of the Issaquah Municipal Code, Construction Codes, and to adopt by reference the 2021 edition of the State Building Code, including portions of the 2021 International Wildland Urban Interface Code, and making other related amendments to Chapter 16.04, Issaquah's Municipal Code, and adopt ordinance number 3051, amending Chapter 16.06 of the Issaquah Municipal Code, Fire Code, to adopt by reference the 2021 edition of the State Building and Fire Code, and make any other related amendments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 6-0. Thank you all. Thank you, James. Nice to see you in chambers. Thank you, Minnie. So the next, that moves us out of regular business and into committee and regional reports, and we'll start with councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Cascade Water Alliance will have their next board meeting on March 27th. The Public Affairs Committee will meet on March 6th. The Finance Committee that the mayor is on will be meeting on the 19th of March. And congratulations to the mayor for being elected the treasurer and secretary of Cascade Water Alliance, moving up in the world as we go. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Yeah, I saw that in the consent calendar. I was like, oh, another thing. Anyways, Eastside Fire and Rescue, our next board meeting is next Thursday. Is that March 14th at 4:00 PM at our headquarters on Newport Way Northwest. We're meeting tomorrow morning to finalize the agenda, but I'm pretty sure it's new member orientation, or just orientation for board members in general, and then electing chair and vice chair, and the finance and administrative committee members. That concludes my report.
Thanks. I'm going to go to councilmember Hunt, if that's okay? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There will be no March meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, and there will be a meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council of Werra 8, our watershed, on Thursday, March 21st, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And councilmember Ray has excused up since this evening. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, March 13th at 7:00 PM. I believe the meeting will be online, and the agenda is still TBD. The Council Services Safety and Parks Committee, as I mentioned briefly, did meet at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, February 27th. Topics, additional topics that were covered included, and I added a... ID 1552, Human Services Element Comprehensive and Strategic Plan Updates. The net-net on that is the committee members saw no need to make changes to the strategic or comp plan elements. And the ID 1558, City Arts Program Update, committee members were in agreement that arts can unify a community and is valuable beyond the money spent on funding. ID 1584, Conference and Plan Update on Draft Arts and Culture Element Policies. After the staff presentation, committee members asked staff to explore more ways to include more artists of color as feedback on that item. And that concludes my report on Services and Parks.
Thank you, councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President De Michele?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Eastside Human Services Forum held its regular meeting on February 8th, and held a discussion around plans for three spring and summer forums for members. And our next meeting is a week from Thursday, and Brad Feigood from King County Public Health will be addressing the board regarding the fentanyl and opioid crisis. Eastside Transportation Partnership held its regular meeting on February 9th, and we heard the exciting news about the East Link, which is now being called Two-Lined Activation, which is scheduled for April 27th with a kickoff in downtown Bellevue. And I sent the council information about that, plus a news article about the kickoff. We also heard a legislative update on ETP's legislative priorities, and then our next meeting is this Friday, in person, in Redmond, the first time we've met in person since the pandemic. And then finally, Regional Transit Committee held its first meeting of 2024 on February 21st. Our newly-elected councilmember Teresa Mosqueta is now the chair of RTC, and Covington councilmember Joe Sumiomo is leading the Suburban Cities Caucus. We reviewed the RTC work plan for 2024, and I suggested additional, and we suggested additional items for discussion. I requested that we have an annual report on the metro safe program, and I believe that one was adopted. And I also want to thank Thomas Valdries for strongly supporting this appointment. He's doing a great job of helping me with this representation. So that ends my report.
Thank you, deputy council president. Council president?
Thank you. The King County Affordable Housing Committee meets this Thursday from 2:00 to 3:30 PM online. The agenda includes a proposed comparative standard for jurisdictions on their progress toward affordable housing policy implementation. No, we're not ranking whether or not people, cities actually build housing, because cities don't build housing, but are we doing what we need to do from a policy standpoint to adopt things into code? We're also receiving updates on the comprehensive plan review status. As it is, I believe 38 remaining cities in King County have not submitted their comp plan housing elements to the Affordable Housing Committee for review, so it's going to be a busy year. Yeah, no, we haven't either. No, 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 we haven't. And then the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meets this Thursday from 10:00 AM to noon online. The agenda includes discussion items on the Puget Sound recovery, and also a presentation on zoning for early childhood education, which I am interested to hear about. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The mayor's report this evening is a little lengthy, so bear with me. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending or potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per N I, and property acquisition per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per N B. The items are expected to take approximately 30 to 45 minutes, and action is anticipated to follow in the open session. I want to provide you an update on our Sister City fundraising efforts for Moroccan earthquake relief. Our fundraiser efforts in December were a huge success. The Sister Cities Commission helped raise approximately $65,000. The first shipping container is on its way to Morocco, which contains 15,000 new items. Those are 10,000 blankets and 5,000 jackets. The second container will depart soon and includes 200 computers and monitors, as well as 65 boxes of donated items from our local community, containing approximately 565 jackets, 175 blankets, and 1,400 assorted hats and other clothing. This is really a big lift that the Sister Cities Commission team is doing. Very proud of them. I'm looking forward to helping distribute these items to villages in Morocco who were most impacted by the earthquake. Some of the upcoming events, we are now looking for Hall of Fame nominations. The nominations are open. This is a top honor for making a lasting contribution to our community. This award shall go to someone who has made a significant impact on the Issaquah community over the course of their career. Each year, the mayor and council president select a person to induct into the Issaquah Hall of Fame for their exemplary record of inspiration, leadership, and service. The award will be presented at the Chamber of Commerce's Annual Issaquah Community Awards Event on May 21st, and you can submit nominations at issaquahwa.gov/nominate. The deadlines for nominations this year is 5:00 PM on April 21st. I'd like to invite everybody to join, show an interest in joining an Issaquah Board or Commission. We are currently recruiting for all of our Issaquah boards and commissions. We believe diversity and inclusion amongst our board members and commission members is critical to the success of our city. Applications can be submitted at issaquahwa.gov/apply, and the deadline for applications is 5:00 PM, March 7th. We're putting out a call for youth artists, authors, and composers. The Young Artists and Authors Showcase, YAS, is an annual art contest that encourages youth worldwide to express the mission of Sister Cities International through original artwork, literature, poetry, photography, and music. This year's theme is Climetscape: Resilient Cities for Tomorrow's Climate. This is open to Issaquah area middle school and high school students within the age range of 13 to 18 as of May 1st, 2024. The Sister Cities Commission, in partnership with the Arts Commission, evaluates artist submissions based on creativity, composition, and theme interpretation. Black nominees are celebrated locally and then advanced to compete in the Sister Black nominees are celebrated locally and then advanced to compete in the Sister Cities International Showcase. The deadline for nominations is 11:59 PM, April 2nd. And for more information, please visit isqwaawa.gov/youthshowcase. And the last item I have to share is on light rail planning, hoping that our community will want to share your thoughts on one of the biggest changes that will be coming to Isqwa. One of Isqwa's top priorities this year is to proactively plan for future sound transit light rail system service expansion. The city of Isqwa anticipates that sound transit will begin their initial project planning phase around 2027. In advance of sound transit's planning efforts, the city will engage diverse community and business members to develop a shared vision statement that encapsulates our community's ideal goals for the future Central Isqwa Light Rail Station area. The city is seeking volunteers for several limited-term volunteer focus groups, which will meet two to three times each between April and May. If you're interested in volunteering, please contact Senior Transportation Planner Thomas Valdries by Friday, March 22nd. And that concludes the mayor's report. The next item for the last few people in our room this evening is an informational update, ID 1616. It's on solid waste, its recology service delivery, and contract implementation. The request before council this evening is to receive the report, and I can see she's already up there. Public Works Director Emily Moon and Environmental and Regulatory Program Manager Evan Brumfield are going to introduce the item. Welcome, Emily. Welcome, Evan.
Good evening, City Council. Great, we're happy to be here tonight along with our partners from Recology to give you a status update on the contract implementation and on service delivery. I am just here briefly to introduce Evan Brumfield, who has a new title. Evan was recently promoted as our environmental, what is your title, environmental and regulatory program manager. It's a really long title. Evan is providing leadership to our environmental science group, and we have nested the solid waste function with the new FTE position that you all authorized, that solid waste analyst position, under Evan's leadership and part of Evan's group. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Evan, and he has some news on that position as well.
Welcome and congratulations, Evan.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, first test. Yeah, thank you. So yeah, thanks, Emily. My name's Evan Brumfield. Worked at the city about 15 years, mainly stormwater, flood, plane. I've come to you guys, talked to you about a lot of stuff like that. Over COVID, I started getting more involved with solid waste, and so have learned a lot in a kind of relatively short amount of time. My, yeah, my update is we have hired a solid waste program analyst with a start date of March 18th. We're very much looking forward to her starting. Her name, her name's Sam. And currently has, as our solid waste function is in the city, is it spread out over multiple departments and several employees. And so we're really much looking forward to getting back to a centralized employee that we were operating under pre-COVID to really handle a lot of, well, to provide that better service that we think that this position will provide, both for internal and external customers. So very much looking forward to that. So what are we here tonight for? It's to provide an update on the Recology Solid Waste Collection Contract, including level of service challenges, program implementation, and diversion. All right, so join us tonight. We have some members of Recology staff. We have Anthony and Alyssa. Anthony is the General Manager, and Alyssa Campbell is the Waste Zero Manager. So I'm going to hand it over to them.
And feel free to use the same podium that Evan was using.
All right, well, Mayor Pauli and council members, thank you so much for the privilege to come speak tonight and present. Looking forward to talking about some of the new items in the contract, which commenced in July of this year, and also talk about some opportunities that we're, that we're working on and going forward, especially as we get closer to the spring and summer months here in Isqwa. To highlight, oops, sorry, to highlight some of the new items in the contract, one that really sticks out is we've got a full-time Waste Zero Specialist, which did start actually previous to July, which Alyssa will elaborate, elaborate a little bit on, and her function out with supporting diversion in the community. But also some of the items that pop is unlimited recycling and commercial and multifamily, and then also new labor disruption section on there, and that provides credits should there be any labor disruption. We've got a great, fantastic relationship with our, with our unions, but wanted to call that out. So as we came out of the summer and started going into the winter months, on November 2nd, what I think is important to call out is our company, Recology overall, was hit with the cybersecurity event. This was very disruptive to our operations, and from a customer's standpoint, very noticeable, and quite frankly, I'm very frustrated. So to touch on that, I included a graph here. This actually came out in The Economist mid-December of 2023 to kind of highlight across the country municipalities and businesses, and how this has really been a record-setting year for cybersecurity events across really the country and westernized world. So that was important to note that. But what happened was, once our security team noticed what appeared to be an attack, they immediately shut down all of our servers and systems until they could really understand what the heck was going on. So we actually brought in a third-party cybersecurity team to scan all of our systems. To be frank, we do have a backup and redundancy systems, but based on the nature of this type of cybersecurity event, there wasn't a whole lot of 100% insurance that, that, once we turned the systems back on, that there couldn't be further damage or corruption of data. So we actually started restoring all of our systems from our backup tapes, which, at the time, we didn't realize, but took quite a while. So what did that mean to customers that Recology services, specifically in the city of Isqwa? Well, what that meant was someone would call in to customer service. Our customer service team was completely blind to their account or what their service levels was. That may be very challenging. Our onboard truck technology, which provides routing and service verification, was completely disabled, very challenging for our drivers. And I got to say that our drivers are really the heroes in all of this, just with their knowledge of routes. But with that, very frustrating for customers to call in and report a miss because a neighborhood or a pocket of the route was missed, especially when we talk about drivers that go on vacation or things like that. And to be able to kind of track down and really rebuild our routes, frankly, from some of our drivers' memories, but also rebuild from the existing data that we had that we could, we could plug back in on old-school paper, paper route sheets, which really put us back probably over a decade in terms of operating. But from that, pleased to say that in terms of personal identification information from customers, that's not housed in our internal system, that's housed with our payment partners. So that was a relief that that information was not compromised. In addition, after a couple of months of working through this, we really had to rebuild, and that was the benefit of having a local call center, was having that close connectivity with our operations and to be able to dispatch out when we get reports of misses or any service challenges, to be able to react as quickly as possible and get our teams out there and to assess. Since this event happened November 2nd, we have brought back online all of our internal customer information systems, our tablets, our onboard routing systems, were all restored with this, this past month in February, mid-month. And so from a customer's standpoint, we've restored all those systems that would generally relate in customer feedback and service, which I can tell you, our drivers were very relieved as well going through that. So moving forward in terms of trucks, one of the benefits and exciting aspects of this contract is a new truck fleet that was ordered. We were on track this summer to take delivery of about 11 new renewable natural gas trucks. But also, we've been piloting a couple different manufacturers of two electric side loader collection trucks, which are slated per the contract, and what we've, what we've agreed upon is at the end of 2025. So some exciting aspects of testing that in terms of the battery life, technology is advanced significantly just over the past year and a half. And then also electric support vehicles. We've received electric truck that our supervisor uses for the city of Isqwa, so she is now, that's operational and in use. And then we'll, this spring and summer, we'll be receiving a electric deliveries van for delivering carts and containers to residents. So we're excited to implement that and have that onboard. One of the things I'd like to highlight is, as we were coming out of this past summer, one of our challenges, and I'll get into a little bit more with, with maintenance, but we actually were working with a rental truck company for garbage trucks. We brought in a handful of front-loading rental trucks that are essentially brand-new, but that helped basically be a stopgap as we're taking on these new trucks estimated for delivery this summer, which was very helpful, especially with multifamily and commercial customers, where we had some challenges this past summer. New staff additions over the past year, which have been huge contributors to our team from a, from a service standpoint. We've got Brittany Remper, she's our Customer Service Manager. She really grew up and career-wise on the call center front, so very analytical, looking at data, looking at ways to better serve our customers, and really got her start in Seattle Public Utilities Call Centers. So very well-versed in the types and the, I guess, jargon or lingo of our industry, but also what the data means as it's coming in from a call center standpoint. Lauren Herbert, she's our Waste Zero Specialist dedicated to the city of Isqwa. Many of you may have seen her out and about doing waste audits, commercial properties and multifamily properties, and Alyssa will speak to that a little bit. And then Alyssa Campbell, our Waste Zero Manager, she's been with Recology for a few years, but took over as our Waste Zero Education Outreach Manager just this past summer. From a monthly meeting with the staff standpoint to kind of highlight that, huge thanks to Isqwa City staff, incredibly helpful, especially during some of the challenging events we had in November and December in terms of sharing feedback from the community. But also, we meet monthly, and it's an opportunity to go over a lot of the rich data and the reporting that comes out to really talk about what, you know, what that means in terms of our engagement with, with the city, but then also from a diversion standpoint, talking about initiatives that we're implementing, and then speak to frankly, in any service lapses or challenges, and that could be from a, from a localized residential side or a commercial or multifamily side, and really speaking to the root cause and what we're doing to address that. One of the pieces of data we share in our monthly reports out of the many items, and I like to highlight this here, is our misses per thousand. This is kind of a barometer we check in terms of collections, customers report a miss, and our follow-up on there. And you can see kind of trailing year over year, or 12-month trailing, I should say, year over year, going back three years. With a huge focus this last summer, I say we, we still have a lot of opportunity to improve those numbers, but you can see when November hit, that kind of aligned with that spike there with the cybersecurity event, where essentially our, we were flying blind out there, which generated a lot of calls and a lot of feedback from customers. The next piece of data that's, that's really helpful in terms of from a customer's standpoint is our call center data. So here you see calls, we measure in answering, seconds to answer. So you can see here, well, a lot of effort over this past year, you see the blue line is trailing 12 months for 2023, so if you look compared to the last couple of years going back to 2021, a huge improvement in terms of the responsiveness of calling. But we've been working really aggressively to take it a step further, and that's implementing a customer satisfaction survey at the end of the call, and this helps training. One of the benefits of having a local call center is immediate responsiveness to operations, and as folks call in, we can relay any feedback that we're hearing. But then also, from a year-over-year standpoint, we've increased our head count by 50%. One of the things we learned in November, that that's not enough, God forbid that we have to address any outside event, you know, natural disaster or something like that, but what we learned was we need to have more of a buffer for head count. So just in the last two months, we've brought on new, five new CSR's, Customer Service reps, and a handful of temps to kind of help with, with some of the backlog as we've been working out getting our systems back online. But you can see here again, that, that call, that seconds to answer really spiked starting in November, and we're just now tapering that back down as we've increased head count to support there. So improving customer service all around, so that's more than just our call center and taking calls, but service in the field. From an immediate standpoint, some of the things we've implemented is just taking a look how our supervisors engage in the community and work with our drivers in the field, so doing more onsite, onsite, we call them route manager visits, and working with properties, but really figure out the root cause. And a huge win with having our Waste Zero or Education Outreach Team working with our operations team is to help continuous follow-up. So it could be right sizing the service level, so maybe they need less trash service and more recycling, or addressing their compost or organics service there. So that, that's been a huge help, and that's something we've, we've just started to implement immediately over the past few months, and we've seen a lot of improvement there, especially on commercial multifamily properties. But going forward, there's really kind of three pillars that we started in September and are aggressively moving forward on, and that's driver recruitment and development, and a new yard that we're building out on the north end that will help, will have a cascading effect in terms of service. So I'll go into a little more detail on that. So from a driver recruitment standpoint, really back in September, we took a look at how we're recruiting drivers and that whole process, and it was taking nearly 90 days to hire a driver and get them route-ready to start driving. So we've cut that down by over 30 days. And a big piece of that is developing our own internal training program, and it's, we've got two dedicated trainers as we bring drivers in. And basically, and I'll, and make no mistake, these are, these are industrial athletes, and what we've learned is just because someone has a CDL, doesn't mean that they can put up with the physicality out there. So we've kind of developed with our corporate team a testing process as folks come in, which will help, which will help make sure that the folks are ready for this type of work, but then also just in the background and bringing them in through our, our overall recruiting process, we've been able to speed that up. Not to mention, we've added additional recruiters to help. So since beginning of November, we've actually started 25 new drivers, and that's going to be a huge help in terms of expanding that relief bench as we go into spring and summer. We've also got a state-approved CDL training program, where we are allowed to basically administer training and grant a CDL. So this provides a tremendous amount of equity and opportunity for our internal employees, starting as a sorter at the MRF. They have an opportunity to work their way up and become a driver, which is frankly life-changing in terms of the earning opportunity for them and their families, but also to help us be a little bit more in control of our own destiny in terms of as we're recruiting folks and bringing them in. What this also allows us to do is hire someone that maybe only has a couple of months of CDL experience, where typically we asked for or demanded six to one year, six months to one year experience. Now we can bring in someone that's maybe only got a month or two that went out and got their CDL, and we've got a regimented training program to get them up, up to speed and make sure they're prepared to take on this role. I mentioned our new yard that we're building out that's going to come online this spring. While we'll still continue to service the city of Isqwa out of our Seattle Yard, having this north yard, we're going to displace about 40 trucks up there. It's just right outside the town of Malte. We'll be servicing Shoreline and Bothell and North Bend out of this yard. But what this allows to do is the ratio of mechanics to trucks starts to improve once we suck 40 trucks out of our Seattle Yard. It also allows more, more space in terms of working on trucks in our maintenance base. We'll have a full maintenance shop up at this, at this north yard. But again, the city of Isqwa will see the benefits of that as we add, have more resources dedicated to, to trucks and service the city as we've, we're getting more space there. One of the things you may be aware of is the, one change as of January 1st was the fixed annual charge. So this has created a little bit more stability as King County has reassessed how they're passing through disposal rates. Again, this is a pass-through on Recology's side. There's, there's not a markup there. We don't realize if there's a plus or minus in the disposal fees, but what this does is help stabilize the rates from what we've seen over the past couple of years. The other piece, huge thanks to the staff, Isqwa staff, is adding in the low income and senior low-income rate discounts into this contract, which we're starting to see come through, and that gets passed directly to our accounting department to be assessed on the billing. So with that, I will turn it over to Alyssa Campbell, our Waste Zero Manager.
Thank you, Anthony. Yeah, thank you, Anthony, and hello. Good evening, councilmembers. So Anthony had mentioned we have Lauren Herbert out in the city, working with properties. She's done quite a bit of work. She's done quite a bit of work in the city of Izua past, just this past July, but even before that. Some of the numbers you see here speak to that. She's had 16 recycle starts and increases with commercial and multifamily properties. She's also had 14 compost starts and increases, and she's also reduced garbage service for seven properties. And a number that's not on here is the hundreds and hundreds of site visits she's doing to these, with these businesses and multifamily properties. It takes a little bit of encouragement to get folks to sign on to new service and to walk with them through how that service will look at their sites. So she does a lot of that work, and she even follows up on the garbage levels that they have. So some people, it's not enough to tell them that they're going to save money on their bill by adding recycling, adding compost service. There is that follow up that's needed, so Lauren does that as well. And in addition to that work in working to reduce the amount of trash service that folks have and kind of increasing diversion rates in the city of Izua, she's also been reducing contamination. So we have a program in Izua that we started this past summer to reduce contamination. She's going to every single multifamily and commercial property to basically look in the bin, as you see, that's actually a picture of Lauren opening a dumpster. And then she'll take photos, she'll build a report based on that, and if the property is past a certain threshold of contamination, she'll follow up with them onsite, she'll give them phone calls, she'll send them a letter, she'll give them more phone calls and more onsite visits so that they're recycling correctly. And she, part of that follow up is providing the free resources that we offer to Izua multifamily and commercial customers. So in that second picture, again, of Lauren, you see a reusable recycle bag, so that's to reduce plastic bags in the recycle bin. She's also providing door hangers, which provide us kind of a reminder of what's recyclable and what's the best practices for multifamily tenants in reducing their waste and throwing their waste out properly. Another update we want to provide you with is in regards to the Izua store. So over in Gilman Village, as you know, the Izua store is providing a great resource for folks in Izua to drop off their hard to recycle items. I will say, the Izua store's got some pretty incredible statistics, leading the charge is 4,803 gallons of styrofoam, which is pretty awesome. After that, we've got 853 gallons of textiles recycled, and then 205 fluorescent bulbs. And you can see on the chart there, there's quite a diversity of items that are being dropped off at the store, and that's really just in the month of January. So Izua does a really great job of using this resource. Another thing that we provide at the Izua store for multifamily and for single family tenants to come and use is a free compost pail. So folks can stop by, get a free kitchen top compost pail and some compostable bags to utilize for their compost service. We've had a couple dozen of folks come by and pick that resource up as well so far. In addition to working onsite with commercial and multifamily properties, we're also in a lot of Izua's events that they've got, that you've all got during the year. It's a very engaged community, so we love going out and tabling. We've done quite a few touch of trucks. You see, there's a chicken in the cab that was at our, the farmhouse school touch of truck, that was a fun one. We've also, in the year of 2023, attended six community events, so including farmer's market, salmon days, of course. And at salmon days, we've been a proud partner of for many years. We provided more than $1,000 worth of pro bono services at that event. And then we've also partnered with the city on their sustainability fair. So we're actually looking forward to partnering with the city at the sustainability fair again this year. We'll be working with Bike Works to accept bikes, bike donations, so that we can provide that, Izua residents can provide that resource back to Bike Works, a local nonprofit. And the last piece is looking ahead. So as Anthony mentioned, we've got some technological advances we're working towards. And then in response to the cyber event that happened, we've got our route ware and our trucks back up. So that's basically those online systems that provide real time feedback of what's happening out in the field. We've also got service verification cameras in trucks, so that's just another layer of being able to provide us with that information and feedback of what's happening in the field. As Anthony mentioned, we've got electric trucks coming, which we're really excited about. We had the pilot experience just looking at those trucks in the city of Izua already, so we're looking forward to getting those in the city. We're also looking forward to enhancing our material recovery facility. So you see that's listed as the MRF, our recycling facility. We've been piloting artificial intelligent robotic technology, and we'll be looking forward to implement that soon as well. We offer public tours every quarter, and we also just offer them whoever wants to come out. So if you're interested, we're very happy to host you. Past that, we've got a lot going on in the Waste Zero diversion outreach side of things as well. So we'll continue outreach to multifamily and commercial properties, and that's based on customer data, and that's also in compliance with local legislature that's going to kind of impact those businesses pretty soon here. We'll also be utilizing the contamination program as a method of working with properties hands on and getting them those resources to recycle and compost correctly. We'll also be at many events this year in Izua, so we plan to come to all of the ones we, are were at previously, but also a few additional ones, including coexisting with carnivores on April 3rd, and then many school events, one of them including Grand Ridge Elementary's Science Night on March 13th. And then I'll just say, in addition, we're very happy and thrilled to partner with the city of Izua on your sustainability goals. I'll just publicly praise you guys for your LEED Gold Certification that you achieved this past year. It's pretty incredible, and we're just happy to be a partner in the work that contributes to that certification and the other goals that you have as a city. So with that, I just want to say thank you again for your time, and if you have any questions, Anthony and I will be here to answer them, in addition to our other city staff here. Thanks.
Thank you, Alyssa. Council questions? Let's start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you so much for that report and coming tonight. When we received the LEED Gold Certification, we had the charts up and little posters that indicated how we were doing in the different areas. And the one area that we had a big challenge in was our diversion rate, and we've been dedicated, I know the administration's been doing everything they can to work on that diversion rate. What message would you like to send to our citizens out there? And I'm probably one of the culprits because I live in a multifamily apartment complex, but what message would you like to send to our citizens in terms of how they can help improve the recycling rate and thus drive down the diversion rate? If you would.
For staff or Recology?
Whoever wants to gather the question would like to step up.
Thank you for the comment. We, as part of the contract renewal, have provided quite a bit of messaging towards encouraging folks, encouraging property managers specifically to adopt more programs to increase diversion at their properties. So not only was that in the new contract mailer that went out, but also the service guide that we provided. I will say personally, Lauren has dug into the data that's, you know, related to the multifamily and commercial diversion levels. And it's a goal of ours for anybody, any property that's not currently set up with recycling, currently set up with compost, doing cold calls and cold visits, and basically encouraging property managers to get signed on with those services, especially since compost is embedded in the cost of trash. So we're really motivated to get that message out there. And in addition to that, we, you know, at these community events we're at, we hear tenants, we ask them to give us their property manager's information so that we can follow up and say, hey, you've got people who really want this program to begin, where can we, where can we help you get this started? So multiple angles in which we're trying to pursue that. And I think Lauren's diversion efforts and the compost starts and recycling starts that you've seen in this last year, it's a massive jump from even the past five years in Izua. So we're really excited to see that continue to grow and continue to kind of respond to that feedback like you've shared.
Alyssa, thank you, that's very helpful. Like to next talk about plastic bags. I watch videos online for Murfs because I'm bored, and I've seen the way the plastic bags really get caught into the machinery to a point where you have to shut them down. Could you just be very clear to our audience that, that plastic bags are not recyclable, and how we should try to make efforts to cut down on plastic bag use?
So glad that you called that out, yes. So yeah, any kind of plastic bag or film or wrap kind of material, we really don't want that in the recycle bin, exactly for the reason that you've stated. There's a particular part in our MRF, it's called the paper screen, and so that's where those spindles are moving really fast. I wish I had a picture because I've got a million of them to put on the screen here. But basically, if that ends up in the machinery or exactly right, we have to stop it, and it has to basically, everything has to be cut loose, and it's a massive operational kind of setback. So a really great way to reduce your plastic bag use, technically, the state of Washington has a plastic bag ban, so we're not supposed to really see those as much, but they, of course, end up in places and, you know, we end up with them. So a really great option is to use a reusable bag when you go to the grocery store, to invest in items that kind of substitute for a plastic bag. So if you use Ziploc bags instead, using like a silicone bag. The Recology Store actually, just to remind everybody, the Recology Store's got, not only can you divert items there, but you can also go there to buy items which will help you reduce waste, or at least get ideas for ways in which you can reduce waste, to name a few. So yeah, again, plastic bags, we don't want them in the recycling bin, and avoid them if you can.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate, appreciate that. Just a last question for follow up. I don't necessarily need the answer tonight, but I did see that we have wildlife resistant containers, there's an extra fee for those, but if you could just get back to us with the pickup, how many people in the city use those on Squawk Mountain? It's a weekly event when the bears come by or the raccoons come by and leave garbage all over the place. We heard a comment in one of our emails about the fact that it doesn't necessarily get picked up all the time by the resident, and we need to work on that for our neighborhood beautification. But if I could just get the number for the number of wildlife resistant containers that are being used in the city, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Council President.
Are we looking for questions or feedback or?
I think let's do questions, and then if you want to have a comment period and provide some feedback, that would be great.
At least in my scenario, the missed pickups seem to be more on compost and recycling, and I got a comment of that from a resident today, actually. Do we have data on whether the missed pickups are trash, compost, recycling, whether they're happening more often on multifamily versus single family or commercial?
So typically, yes, we can pull the data to kind of discern any misses that are called in, what type of commodity they are, to kind of look at where maybe there's hotspots for that. I can say when, with our tablets down, I think was one of the more frustrating things is we may have a relief driver or sub driver using a paper map, and then we find there's pockets being missed, we'd have to go back. And a lot of times it took, unfortunately, a resident calling in saying, hey, my, my street or my chunk of my street got missed for recycling. So that's something we've seen the last few months, that now is finally starting to taper down with some of those onboard technologies come back and be able to get those resources in the hands of our drivers. But to answer your question, we can go back and look as folks report in misses, we'll be able to track those by commodity.
Few more questions on that, you might as well just stay there. Do we, you've reported on the cybersecurity event, but obviously, weather plays a factor into misses. Do we have data on why the misses are happening, whether they're weather, cybersecurity, whether whole areas are being missed, or single units are being missed, anything like that?
Yeah, so whether typically, at least in this past year, if it's not a bona fide snow event where there's large swaths of the city unreachable, you could have icy areas in the Highlands, you might have icy neighborhoods. Typically, what we try to do is go back in the afternoon if it can melt off, and if it looks like we're not able to do that, we will section those off. How the process should work is that chunk of the route is isolated, and then we do an automated call out to the, to the residents, saying, leave your can out, we'll go back for you in the morning. So those, those types of situations, we do track and can go back and look and see what neighborhoods or what route on which days were impacted by inclement weather.
Okay, I'd like to see more data on that and better understand whether, weather misses that are something that you notice and proactively or reactively announce to customers, whether those are really considered in this miss statistic or not, and kind of how we break down the understanding of why those are, why the increase in misses. Let's see, any, I think the rest are all comments, not questions.
So in looking at the graphics they presented tonight, you just want more granularity to break down those numbers so you have a better understanding. Any more questions about the information presented? And then I know that there are some councilmembers who want to make comments. Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, I was actually, just to piggyback off that, I was interested in potentially seeing some of the same data because the memo talks about all the different reasons why misses might be happening, like staffing vacancies, difficult labor market, substitute drivers and all that, weather that was brought up, and then of course, the cybersecurity thing that you brought up with us too. So it'd be great to kind of get a sense of proportionality there for the misses.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, that was a comment.
Very data driven, council wants to see more granularity in the data, not surprising. Okay, now another question?
Actually, I'm curious about the CDL thing too. So where do individuals typically get, I'm assuming that's commercial drivers?
Yeah, so typically, there's, there's a variety of commercial driving schools. Usually, on average, we've seen it can be five to seven grand that the person has to put up, and it's usually a school that could be, you know, 10 to 12 weeks. Sometimes you could do it on nights or over the weekends, but typically, most of them are during the day. So it's very tough for someone that's working a full time job supporting a family to take a pause and go get their CDL. Usually, they have to pause work. So that's another benefit of this, is that they're basically, as they achieve their CDL and getting experience, they immediately move into driver, union driver wages as they're building up their hours once they're awarded the CDL. So we provide the content and the training from the, from the book side of it. So again, it's certainly something we were really proud of to achieve because it's so difficult for a lot of these folks to get away if they don't have a CDL to get that.
Thank you. More questions?
Sorry, just on the CDL thing. So are you noticing that individuals that you're able to give CDLs, are you noticing that they stay with Recology as their driver? Are they, are you noticing that instances of that being a transferable skill now, that they can now use into other labor markets?
Yeah, so the program is new enough to, we really haven't seen anyone switch, switch out, but we have seen is folks that have said, hey, I went and got my CDL, but everywhere I'm applying to says I need a year of experience. And so having this, what we call our apprenticeship training program, which basically mirrors our CDL training, they can, we can bring them into that program, and then we're basically not just throwing them out there into a truck, they're building those skills on our type of equipment to go out there and do the work.
Looking at Councilmember Hunt. So I'm going to allow the, council wants to also make some comments during contract transition. As you can imagine, there's a lot of excitement about Recology coming on, but the person to my right is the one who's had to answer most of the questions about missed deliveries, getting some of the narrative that you gave tonight on why, and then potentially providing the council with some more grant, data broken down a little bit more can help, but it has caused concern in the community. So I'm going to open it up for comments, and we'll start with Council President.
Yeah, I've answered a lot of emails. A lot of emails.
A lot of emails about people, as I'm sure you guys have, too. But I, I think it is very important to convey the level of frustration that our community is experiencing. And they're, the situation, and I'm sure most of us, I think, have also experienced some misses. I certainly have up in the Highlands. So it's also personal on that standpoint. One of the problems of this is the optics of it, which is that the misses started increasing right around the time that the contract increased, and people noticed that. When we're looking back on this, though, as much as the November cybersecurity event is fresh and everything in your mind, and that was a big increase, when we're looking back at that chart, it's really important to recognize the difference between January, February, and like May. And that's a 40% increase. Even though it looks small, because November is so high, what we're experiencing is a 40% increase in missed pickups, and that's for the reported ones. I'm not even sure everybody's reporting, because I know I'm not reporting every time this is happening. So I, I think it's important just to convey that. A few things I will also convey to staff. I would like more details on what types of fines we're putting forth, how those are having an impact. I would like to know, I know recology per contract does not charge for recycling and compost, and that's fantastic. That helps move people toward the adoption of those things, but I'm wondering whether we still have the ability to fine for misses on those. So I'd like to better understand that. Also got a complaint from a resident today saying, hey, here's the problem. What's happening most for me is my compost or my recycling isn't getting picked up. My trash certainly gets picked up, and then when I call in and I say, hey, I had a problem with this, there's no refund, because it's not, he's not getting charged for those services. And so that's, that's a miss for us, and that's a, that's frankly, a very frustrating situation for a consumer to be in, to have what is a free service and not be able to have a refund for those misses. And then further on that, again, most of my misses have been on recycling and compost. When that happens, it discourages people from using that service. And so I, I really do want to understand what the difference is in miss rates between those, and make sure that we're not seeing more misses happening on those areas that you guys aren't charging on. Just to put it frankly. And then I'd like to get a better understanding from staff. What percentage of people do we think are actually reporting? Because again, I don't think everybody's reporting, and if there are stats or kind of some best practices out there on what actual percentage we're maybe seeing misses happen versus just reporting, I'd like to know that as a better understanding of it. And then I'd like to know what the performance looks like for single family versus multifamily versus commercial. Are we seeing misses happening more often on one versus another? Also generally heard that we're, and we've seen a lot more reports of those multifamily housing units having very overfilled dumpsters, things like that, and better understanding whether there's a change in user behavior versus a change in pickup and what that looks like. So I, I will just put it out there. This is a really frustrating situation for our community, and we would really like to work toward a good resolution that makes sure that the very valuable contract that we signed is getting the services that the users were promised.
Thanks, Council President. Deputy Council President?
Thank you. I just want to echo a couple of things from Council President Walsh and also Councilmember Joe. I had a long conversation today at lunch with a friend, and we were talking, what's on the council agenda tonight? And I said, well, we'll be talking to recology. And so she shared with me as well that she and her husband wanted to compost, did compost, put out their little compost bin, and, and the pickup was so erratic, was the word she used, that they finally just gave up composting. So I'll just share that story with you. Again, we want to, you know, that's the kind of thing that we want to encourage people to do that behavior, and, and so it's difficult when they get so frustrated that they, they just don't want to continue. So the other thing I, I wanted to plus one, Councilmember Joe's comments. I, too, am a multifamily resident, and I would love to have a composting program, and I know it's difficult. It's hard to explain to a group of people how to do things, and especially when different work hours, different, you know, it, it's difficult to do the communications. But I would just encourage whatever we can do, and I can talk to you offline about, you know, where I live and, and who to get a hold of, but we would love to have a composting system at my condominium. One of my concerns when I first came on the council was the lack of signage in the collection bins, and I will say that that has vastly improved. And on top of our recycling bin now, we have a big sign that says, "No plastic bags." And so I hope that's helped. I hope that's helped, but I thought, this is great. And whatever we could do to communicate in multifamily environment, it's so different than a single family, because you've got so many different people with so many different backgrounds and work, you know, and some of them are gone for three months out of the year, and all of those kinds of things. So communications is really, really important in terms of how do you recycle, what do you recycle? But I do commend you for the better signage that I'm seeing, at least at my place. So thank you.
Any other comments from council? I'm just going to summarize a little. I think, I think what you're hearing is that council would like to have a deeper understanding of the data, and probably along with that, if it's broken down by category, the steps you're taking in each category to address it, whether it's driver shortage, weather, et cetera. And that would be super helpful. Also, an appreciation for the elements of the contract that are going to get us to help us meet some of our goals, where we realize as a community, we are not where we need to be. Thank you for presenting that. I think that is really good, but you're hearing a really strong desire from council, like, let's get there. So again, some reporting back on that. And then for the administration, there was some requested information on fines and how all of that works, and how that can help us get to these performance metrics that we, we expect and that the community expects. So did I miss anything, or did that cover? Deputy City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I did hear a lot of requests for more information. So recognizing the, the time tonight, we can provide that information in another format. There's a lot of questions, so we want to make sure we answer them thoroughly, and we can do that in the near future.
Missed anything, or are we done? Okay. Thank you very much for coming. It was nice to meet both of you. Look forward to seeing the additional information. Much appreciated, and thank you, staff.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Are there any items for Good of the Order? We do have an executive session, so I'm going to go through a few things before we enter. Good of the Order. Deputy Council President?
Oh, you know, I just wanted to follow up on the comment that we heard from the students, and just ask the question. I, I thought that that was a pretty reasonable request, that we write that letter. So I guess my question is, how do we proceed if the, I, I know the council needs to weigh in as a whole, but how would we proceed if we wanted to?
I had that written down as well. So I'm assuming the deputy city administrator will take this back to our sustainability team, who can draft up a letter for council to review. Yeah, it was a great request. Okay. Any other Good of the Order items? Okay, thanks. So we have some upcoming meetings. The March 11th Committee of the Whole meeting has been canceled. The March 18th Regular City Council meeting has some anticipated agenda items, which include the Transportation Advisory Board 2024 Work Plan, the Central Isaguas Pioneer Program, and Title 18 Amendments, and Light Rail Plan. So small stuff, you know, all the little stuff. Sounds great. The last item on our agenda this evening is the executive session, and this executive session this evening is to discuss pending or potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per N I, and property acquisition per RCW 42.30, .110, .110 per N1 per N B. We're going to estimate approximately 30 minutes for these items, and we will extend the executive session as needed. Action is anticipated to follow in the open session. So please note that executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will be recessing into an executive session at 9:22 PM. I'm asking that the, oh yeah, definitely. I asked the city clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting, and anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting. You're welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened. So city clerk, let us know when we're going to go in, but we're going to give the city council a five-minute break at this point. We are back in open session at 9:52, and do I have a motion? Council President?
I move to authorize payment to Isaguas Hospitality LLC in the amount of $12,677.51 as reimbursement for paving costs and $758,100 as just compensation for acquisition by the city of portions of King County Tax Parcel Number 202406-9097 that are necessary to complete the city's 12th Avenue Northwest SR 900 slash 17th Avenue Northwest project, and authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement and any other necessary, or any other documents necessary to effectuate the transfer.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? I am not seeing any, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously, 6-0, and there being no further business. The meeting is adjourned at 9:53.